So I'm the daughter of immigrants from India and the Netherlands, and I grew up in Iowa. I went to Washington University in St. Louis and ended up staying in St. Louis for a good long while, and I worked in civil rights for over a decade. I came to Orlando in 2011 with my husband and my two kids. We've raised our two kids in the district, and since 2018, I've worked as the grants manager for the city of Orlando.
Okay, you're a Rosemont resident.
I am.
Yeah, so why did you decide to run for District Three?
You know, I really believe in responsive, trustworthy government, and when I heard that Commissioner Stewart was thinking of retiring, you know, I thought that there was a way for me to leverage my experience in City Hall and my lifelong advocacy for folks in my community and people that I've worked with to become that trustworthy, responsive commissioner.
What do you think is the biggest issue facing District Three and the city of Orlando?
Really, there are two issues: transportation and housing, and they're both linked together. You know, whether you're a commuter stuck in traffic for hours, or you're trying to take the bus and you have to take three buses to get to work, or you're worried about sending your kids to bike to school, everybody that I've been hearing from talks about the transportation challenges, and especially for young people who are getting their first job, it is really hard to find a place to live that's affordable to them. We have an affordable housing crisis in Orlando.
What are some of your ideas to face those two challenges?
So I really want to see more transit-oriented development, so that not every adult has to own a car in order to be able to work, and we can do that by expanding our investment in public transit. I would love to see Sun Rail expanded at the 441 corridor, and to have the Lynx bus go more frequently, to have more routes so that we have more coverage, and to increase the appeal of Lynx so that people will decide to use public transit. Then we won't need as much space for parking, and we can use that space to build more affordable housing.
You're a grants rider. Where would that money come from?
Well, there are a lot of sources of grant funding and city funding. So in terms of investment in public transit, you know, there's no one elected position in anywhere in central Florida where you can wave a magic wand and make public transit happen. But working with our federal elected officials, so Representative Maxwell Frost has just submitted a bill to increase investment in public transit, so we're really excited about that. Our state legislature, Senator Carlos Guillermo Smith sponsored a bill last session to be able to change where TDT funds can go. And obviously, tourists can rely on public transit. It's something that if we had the infrastructure to get tourists easily from the airport to our attractions, that would benefit our tourist industry. So I'd love to see TDT funds being used that way. We can also look on a local level within the city at the transportation impact fees, and set aside a certain percentage of those impact fees just for public transit.
So if elected, what would you do on day one in office?
Day one is about building relationships and building trust, and, you know, I believe very strongly that our government should be responsive, that I should be an advocate for District Three residents, that I should be someone who leads with absolute integrity and fiscal responsibility. So setting that stage for being the most responsive commissioner is something that I would work on on day one.
What is your vision for what the city of Orlando looks like in 15 years from now, the year 2040?
I see a train of 441. I see people making choices to use public transit and to walk and bike more, and that will create vibrant main streets where there will be more foot traffic, so people will run into their neighbors at the corner store instead of driving to the big box behemoth. And one thing that I've realized as a Lynx rider, you know, I take the bus every day to City Hall, I'm one of the only people who does that, that it really starts to rebuild your social fabric. You run into all sorts of people that I wouldn't otherwise run into or get to know. And when we start rebuilding that social fabric as a community, we're stronger together, we're more united, and we're healthier, we breathe cleaner air, and so it really benefits our community in multiple ways.
Why do you ride the bus to work every day?
I ride the bus, you know, my car crashed in December of 2023, and luckily, we weren't injured significantly. And I thought a lot about, you know, what car I wanted to replace it with, and I decided that I would, you know, trade in that couple thousand dollars' worth of insurance money, which wasn't really enough to buy a new car for a $50 bus pass. And so I ride the Lynx because I care about climate change, and the more that I've been riding the Lynx, the more benefit I've seen. So I walk over 10,000 steps every single day for the past year and a half. I've lost weight, I'm healthier, I feel better. You know, when I go into work, I've already had 15 positive interactions with my neighbors, with the bus driver, with the person who cleans the streets, with the person who cleans outside of the bank. These are people I look forward to seeing. We wave, we smile, we know a little bit about each other, and it's really just made my life better.
How'd you get here today?
So my son dropped me off. I was a little worried about my hair, but I'm gonna walk home.
Uh, yeah, that, you know, that is unusual, and I think a lot of people, certainly people you work with, as you mentioned, at City Hall, really have no idea what it's like inside a Lynx bus on a daily basis.
You know, if elected, I believe I'd be the only elected official in central Florida who rides the bus. And transportation and public transit is a big conversation right now, and we need somebody who is in a decision-making position when it comes to these issues, who has real experience with our public transit system.
Governor DeSantis has called on property tax reform. He's not the only state official to call for that, saying that they should be cut if not completely eliminated. What is your reaction and response to that?
Well, my reaction is that it's a way for the state government to keep control over local communities, and, you know, obviously, we need our local property taxes for government to function, for our schools, and we know that there is wide support for the work that local government does and for our children to have an excellent education. So I think it's both unpopular and short-sighted.
Is there anything else that you would like to share with us that I didn't ask?
I mean, maybe a word about being a Quaker.
Okay. Tell me, yeah.
So I'm the clerk of the Quakers of Orlando, a longtime Quaker here in Orlando, and, you know, some of the things that Quakers value are community, integrity, peace, equality, and stewardship. And so these are some of the values on how I live my life, and that integrity piece is really central, both to how I live my life and how I want to lead.
Tell me more about that.
Religious Society of Friends was founded in the 1600s, and Quakers were persecuted in England, and many of them came to the United States to escape religious persecution, including William Penn, who founded the Colony of Pennsylvania. And Quakers have been central in the abolition movement. They were stops on the Underground Railroad and have been involved in many major social justice and peace movements in our country. And so we're a very small group, but we're mighty. We have always believed in walking the walk and in making the change that you want to see in the world.
My name is Roger Chapin. I own my own communications firm, a public relations firm called Chapin Communications. So I'm born and raised here in Orlando. I went to public schools. I went to Memorial Junior High. I went to Oak Ridge High School. I went off to Florida State University, came back, married my wife Susan. We live in College Park. We've been there 27 years. I have a daughter, Gray, who's a senior at the University of Florida. I've pretty much, I've worked here in Orlando my entire life. I've worked for Darden Restaurants. I worked for 20 years with Mears Transportation. Now I own my own public relations communications firm. So, yeah, that's a little bit about myself.
Okay, and why did you decide to run for District Three?
So I decided to run for District Three really to get things done or to continue to get things done. People, elected officials serving on the local level, are really about blocking and tackling. They're about code enforcement, they're about growth management, they're about stormwater, they're about parks. I want to make sure that we do all those essential things that government does every day. I want to support our Main Street programs. I want to expand transit and walkability and make sure our communities remain safe for our wonderful neighborhoods we have throughout District Three.
What do you think is the biggest issue facing the city of Orlando and District Three?
Yeah, so District Three, when I listen to voters, affordability is on their mind, and so you think as a city commissioner, what does that mean? You know, we're not in charge of interest rates, we don't handle insurance, but there are some areas. So when I think of affordability, I think about expanding transit. I think of walkability, where you can walk from your neighborhood to Edgewater Drive or Ivanhoe or Corinne Drive. I think about utility rates. I currently serve on the Orlando Utilities Commission. We have the lowest rates of any of our competitors, any of our municipal competitors, and any of our, any of the investor-owned utilities. So you think about property taxes, regulations, you know, trying to keep government, you know, make our lives easier, not harder. So that's, you think about affordability in that manner on a local level.
So what would you work to change on day one?
So day one, I mean, I'm really gravitated towards the main streets in District Three. So I definitely want to further engage the main streets with our neighborhoods and kind of, I think the main street programs can bring the neighborhoods in. What I want to make sure doesn't happen is that City Hall, on a larger city council level, doesn't turn into a place that's too political. So I want to make sure that, I mean, Orlando continues to move in the right direction and still can be a place for economic growth, where people want to move, where companies want to relocate, where people still want to visit the city of Orlando. So I want to make sure that we keep our eye on the ball when it comes to governing, really, and getting things done for the citizens.
And just going back to housing affordability, what specifically do you think that the city could do or should do to lower prices?
Yeah, so I served on the municipal planning board several years ago. Orlando Mayor Buddy Dyer put me on the municipal planning board. There are planning tools you can use related to density, so that's bringing more units online in neighborhoods and areas where it's density-appropriate. I also served on the downtown development board when we built the Performing Arts Center, and we would give incentives to people to live downtown. We would give incentives to people to live near transit, to ride Sun Rail. So those are some of the tools you can do to have more units online, to encourage people to live in places where it's more, there's more density and we can get more units online.
So I have to say, I've been hearing that theme a lot when talking to the district candidates. What is the challenge to making that happen, to making it easier, to changing the density, to getting those incentives? What are the roadblocks that city commissioners are facing to make that happen?
Yeah, well, growth, you know, growth can be a positive word and can be a negative word. So I think it's continuing to encourage responsible growth when it comes to density in our, in these hubs, if you will, you know, where we have a lot of businesses already, where we have people that can walk to dinner and bike to work, or walk to work, or be near a transit station. So I think for the city of Orlando, you know, we're doing more infill development, and we're not dealing with sprawl. So I think that will also help with pricing. I think there'll be some innovative planning things that come along. There's a lot of people talking about parking restrictions. Do you have to have garages? You know, how many spaces for businesses, things like that, I think you're going to see in the next several years for planners, professional planners at the city.
And on that note, what do you think the city of Orlando will or should look like 15 years from now, say, in 2040?
Wow, 2040. So I think the city is on a great trajectory. I think we're moving in the right direction. I think what we're going to see is a 20-minute downtown, okay? And by that, I mean, we want to see our downtown continue to grow and become, you know, economically viable, but we're also going to see these hubs, and you call them 20-minute downtowns, because it takes you 20 minutes to get to each of these hubs, whether you're in Winter Garden, whether you're in College Park, whether you're in Winter Park, whether you're in Baldwin Park. So I think we're going to see a lot more focus on neighborhoods and these neighborhood hubs, so, you know, we're going to have to have more green space, we're going to have to have better walkability, we're going to have to have more connectivity. We're going to have strong neighborhoods where people feel safe and can go out and walk after dark, you know, to these neighborhood hubs. But I think, I think the 20-minute downtown model is kind of where I see Orlando going, and it's these very vibrant activity centers within, you know, about 20 minutes of each other.
Governor DeSantis has called on property tax reform. The governor, along with other state officials, have said that property taxes should be cut if not completely eliminated in some cases. Do you agree with that? And if that were to happen, how should the city respond to that?
I don't know what the plan is, because local governments rely on property taxes to fund, obviously, the government. And so when I'm out talking to people, you know, people want wider streets, wider sidewalks, they want stormwater fixed, they want potholes fixed, they want code enforcement, they want police, they want fire. So I don't know what the impact is, how they're going to replace that revenue, but it certainly would be, people should be very worried about how it's going to impact local government. That's not to say that there's not this affordability issue of property taxes, home values, insurance, but it's certainly going to be something where you're going to use a scalpel and not kind of a machete to, if you're going to cut around the edges, because you have to be very careful, because local government is closest to the people. So if they're going to just do away with property taxes somehow, first of all, it's going to have to go to a referendum, because the governor doesn't have the power to do that, neither does the legislature. So, you know, then you're giving people the ability to cut their own taxes, so we just need to make sure that we've got a plan that is a balanced approach when you cut revenue to replace revenue.
Is there anything that I did not ask you about that you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, so I ran for this seat 23 years ago, and I was unsuccessful. And I didn't go run for something else. I went back to doing what I thought I could help, and that was to be involved civically. So I've served on the municipal planning board, I've served on the downtown development board when we approved the Performing Arts Center. I served on the oversight committee for the Performing Arts Center. I've served on the Orlando Utilities Commission. I was instrumental in bringing UCF to downtown Orlando to create a village. So I've definitely got the most experience. I might not be the most energetic or the youngest, but I've got the most experience in the race, and with Robert Stewart retiring after 20 years, with Mayor Dyer retiring after 20 years, I can really be ready to hit the ground running on day one.
Great, and I guess one final thing, Gators or Seminoles?
Whoo!
You've got a house divided, it sounds like.
I do, so I'm a Seminole. My daughter's a Gator, my wife's a Gator, all my in-laws are Gators, my brothers are Seminoles, so...
That's tough.
It's tough. We all pull for each other when we're not playing ourselves. When I visit my daughter, I'll wear blue, but it's not Gator blue. And no logos.
Yeah, so I grew up here locally, right down the street from here, Rosemont. That's what I call home, that's the soil I grew from, and I love it here. I love the neighborhoods I live in, I love District Three, Orlando. My first job was with the city of Orlando at the Rosemont Community Center. I was working as a summer camp counselor, so I'm very rooted in this city. Also, I went to school here locally at Victory Christian Academy, all the way up to my senior year from second grade. So I love this city. It's where I call home, it's special to me, and I want to give back in a big way. I have four sisters, Kishana, Nicole, Karina, Kiara.
Are they older?
Yeah, one is older, three are younger.
Okay.
My parents are immigrants. My mom is from Jamaica. She came to America when she was 14 years old. My dad is from Guyana in South America, and he came to America when he was eight years old, and, yeah.
And you were born in Orlando?
Yes, ma'am, born in Orlando. My birth is actually in the Orlando Sentinel in 2001, and I'm 24 years old. I'm a youth sports coach, coach basketball, and I mentor young kids. I also do, that's volunteer, but for work, I do real estate, I do real estate wholesaling.
Why did you decide to run for District Three?
I decided to run because I owe this community everything. It's invested so much into me, it's given so much to me that I believe it was time for me to give back in a big way. And some of those organizations that invested in me was, one, my neighborhood in Rosemont. They did so much for me, they helped build and shape my story, and I felt like I needed to give back and return that investment. Also, another program I was in that mixed cops and kids together called Dueling Dragons of Orlando was really pivotal and instrumental in making me who I am today. And I wasn't on the path that I was on 10, 15 years ago. It was because a mentor of mine that I was very close to, she ended up getting shot and killed at the Princeton Walmart less than a mile away from here. And when she died on January 9th, 2017, it was heartbreaking for me and for all that knew her. And on that day, after all the interviews like we're doing now at the Rosemont Center, I walked home, and on that walk home, I still remember it to this day, I made a promise to myself and to God that I would dedicate the rest of my life to public service in honor of her and what she did for me. And that's a long story, but...
You're talking about Officer Deborah Clayton?
Yes, yes, ma'am, Officer Deborah Clayton. She was very instrumental to me and to who I am today. She believed in me more than anyone else. She saw something in me that I didn't see in myself, and now I'm seeing it. And I believe it's time that I give back to this district, that I extend my, her legacy of public service, and I give back in a big way.
What do you think is the biggest issue facing the city of Orlando?
Number one, I believe, is housing affordability. It's becoming increasingly unaffordable to live here. 1,500 people are moving here per week, according to a report, and we're not meeting the need of those people when it comes to our supply of housing. So I believe we need some policy reform when it comes to zoning in the city of Orlando, and I want to bring that. We also need to work with small-scale developers in bringing that affordable housing here.
What type of policy reform?
I believe zoning reform. When you go through Rosemont, you see all types of variety of housing. You see single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and it doesn't stop. And I believe we need that diversity in all of our neighborhoods. I believe that's instrumental in making our city more affordable.
What would you work to change on day one?
Number one is our commitment to partnering with law enforcement in our community. I believe that's really important when it comes to public safety, and it was instrumental in my life and so many of the lives of my peers. So I believe we need to dedicate ourselves to making our community safer by partnering with law enforcement more, more community engagement, more community-oriented programs, so that it's not an adversarial relationship with law enforcement, but it's not us versus them, but us together versus whatever issue we're facing.
You feel like that's lacking right now?
Yes, ma'am, and the city of Orlando is doing a good job at addressing this issue, but I believe I have what it takes to push it even more and bring more initiative to this.
What is your vision for the city of Orlando, say, 15 years from now, in the year 2040? What does it look like to you?
When I look at the city 15 years from now, I believe I want a more vibrant, walkable city. I want a more bikeable city. I want a city that caters to our youth and the next generation, and that's another reason why I'm running, because I believe Orlando can't wait to address the problems the next generation will inherit, which is the dangerous and jeopardizing roads that we have here. You can't walk, you can't bike, and we're one of the most dangerous pedestrian areas in the nation. So I believe we need to become a more walkable and bikeable city, and that's my vision, and it starts with our Main Street corridors. We need to make them more walkable and bikeable, and also connecting our neighborhoods, the invisible glue that ties us all together. Rosemont isn't really connected to College Park, and I believe we need to become more connected when it comes to walkability, bikeability, and affordability.
Governor DeSantis has called on property tax reform, as well as some other state officials, saying they should be cut if not completely eliminated. Do you agree with that, and how would, do you feel the city should respond to that?
When you look at the city of Orlando in our budget, you'll see that we invest more in our police and firefighters and our public safety officers than we collect in property taxes. And also, the majority of the city of Orlando's general revenue comes from property taxes. So you eliminate that, you eliminate what makes this city safe, you eliminate what makes this city connected and vibrant, and I believe it's a necessity to have collection of property taxes. So I disagree with the governor in that case. I believe it's important that we collect property taxes and that we're working with the residents that live here to make their community safer, and I believe that's a public good that we're collecting.
Some people may say, you're 24 years old, you don't have the experience that's needed to be a city commissioner. What would your response be to people like that?
Number one, I believe my age is actually an asset rather than a liability, and I'll tell you why. It's because my best years are ahead of me, and that's the same for us as a neighborhood, as a city, and as a district. Our best years are ahead of us, only if we start electing candidates to reflect that. And I'm not short in experience. I sat on an advisory board for Orange County Citizens Corps as the mayor's representative, Mayor Jerry Demins. I give so much to my community, and I believe I could give so much more at my young age, and I believe our city needs that. We need a fresh perspective, we need someone with energy, accessibility, and willing to give their all to the city, and I believe that's me. Our city's best years are ahead of us, and so are mine, and I believe that's a great connection.
Is there anything you would like to share with our viewers that I didn't ask you about?
I'm not related to Kevin Durant, so that's number one. I have the famous last name, but I'm not related to him. I'm great at basketball, that's why I became a youth sports coach, coached basketball for young kids, but I'm not related to him, and I'm trying to think of something else. I love playing chess.
I'm Kimberly Kiss. My number-one jobs are wife and mom, but I'm also a probate estate planning and trust lawyer.
All right, tell us a little bit about your background.
Sure, so I grew up in Orlando. I went to, we were saying, I went to Howard, I went to Boone, Valencia, Rollins. I've been here for most of my life, with the exception of going to law school, and I've been practicing estate planning and probate for at least the past 10 years. And in doing that, I have talked to a number of families, and this is about what their concerns are, what their books say, what they want for their children, and so I've had and developed a really good sense of what's important to our families in the area. Something I like to talk about growing up here was, I was raised by a single mom. We did live in affordable housing for a time. She saved money and bought a townhome, which was a great housing option for a mom, and she took the bus to work at the airport. I took the city bus to my first job at Chick-fil-A over in the Colonial Plaza. We all loved that one. And I say that because I know, growing up here, that the city services, the bus, the after-school programs, the community center were a big part of my life. And now, being able to raise my own family here, also in the city limits, I just, I feel like I have so much to give back and so much to be thankful for, and want to make sure that our families here now have the safe opportunities.
So why did you decide to run for District Three?
Community, which we've been talking about, and sometimes I say that people go, wait, what? I said, yeah, the normal things: infrastructure, safety, transportation, affordability. Those are absolutely a part of my campaign, and there's coalitions of people working on that that I will be a part of if I'm commissioner. But what I saw was a real need to really strengthen our community ties and our families to our small businesses, our small businesses to make sure they are providing what our residents need. So we really created these corridors of support for our residents and really strengthened the connection of our families, and that's any family, every age and stage of life, for families, whether you have cats, dogs, or kids, but to make sure that everyone felt like they were included and supported in our neighborhoods.
So what do you think is the biggest issue facing District Three and the city of Orlando right now?
City of Orlando as a whole, we know some of the biggest issues are homelessness, and that's not just an Orlando issue, that is a regional issue. Transportation is also going to be a huge regional issue, and there are regional coalitions that are working on that. What I see, and the role that I'd like to play as commissioner, is really engaging the community. So if the Orlando says, hey, I want to solve the homeless problem or the transportation problem, it's not going to be able to do that on its own. We really need to engage residents and inspire them to be involved, and I think that comes from just making really strong connections.
Do you feel like that's not happening right now?
I don't want to say that it's not happening. You know, I think everyone who's devoted their life to public service has done a great job. I just think, moving forward, we know these things are going to be on the table. So taking over as District Three Commissioner, I know that overseeing the Edgewater Drive improvement, Virginia and Corinne, all the things that are on the table are going to happen when we really have people engaged, and that's through strengthening communication channels and reaching out to people.
People in this campaign have talked a lot about transportation issues and, you know, an affordable cost of living. As someone who has relied on Lynx and public transportation in the past, what do you think could be done to improve what's being offered right now?
So there is a coalition of people doing this, and I feel very thankful that I've been included in some of the conversations already, and I hope to continue to be, even if I don't win the race, because what is going to happen is revisiting things. You know, if you look at Lynx and you say, maybe this isn't meeting all of our needs, how do we recon- How do we reconfigure this? And that may be pulling it in from the edges of the communities and saying, "What are our main points? How is the best way to use our resources?" And I think, at this point in time, we have the technology, especially, we know with AI, to really evaluate these things and reconfigure them. So I think that's going to be step one. And for transportation, I mean, I think we're all going to say, getting a train to the airport would be so helpful for all of us. But I think those things are already coming together. We see community buy-in from our big businesses. We see our local governments taking place in that conversation. And it's just going to be about having the right leaders who can engage the residents so that if things come up for a vote again, or need more support, that the groundwork will be laid there for things to pass and to happen. No secret, my husband is an affordable housing developer, and that was an inspiration for me to want to do this, because I've seen behind the scenes how things work, and it's complicated. The financial process, all of the pieces that have to pull together, is a perfectly-done machine in order for it to work. And so knowing that, knowing sometimes the resistance that can come from the community, I really wanted to be someone who could engage more people in the conversation in hopes of getting us all on the same team of building it.
So when you say he's an affordable housing developer, give me an example of, you know, some of the projects that he has worked on, like what types of projects and where these projects take place?
Sure. So he does things all over the state of Florida. He just finished up a development that's in Altamont Springs, right next to the Sunrail. And something I think we'll continue to see more of, and something he's always looking for, is land that's near a transportation hub like that. So now there's an affordable complex right next to the Sunrail, so that anyone working there will also have access to that public transportation.
What would you work on on day one if elected?
Day one is building the roundtable. And so part of my campaign for the summer has been knocking on doors and talking to literally thousands of people. It has been such a learning process to listen. And I've met with the leaders of the neighborhood associations, the main streets. And what I really want to do is put together a team of people that I can lean on and that can come to me with other neighborhood things. There's 50,000 to 60,000 people that live in the district. It is hard to take on all of those comments or to reach out to all of them individually. And so it's really going to be about creating that pipeline and that team of delegation to make sure that information is getting transferred and that things are getting done.
What is your vision for the city of Orlando, say 15 years from now, in the year 2040?
Oh, gosh. You know, I want, so I grew up here. I want my kids to stay here. Right now, we know there's a little bit of a brain drain happening in Orlando, and a lot of our young professionals are leaving, or they're going away to school and they're not coming back. And it's because we don't have the diverse jobs that they need, we don't have the housing that they can buy, we don't have the social or the road infrastructure that we really need to get to the next level of supporting a whole new generation of families. And so my hope right now, and I think some of that's already in place, Orlando's been putting this into motion for a long time, but it's to continue to do the work and to do it with experience and to do it with energy, so that, what do we say, 15 years? So in 15 years, my child will be in her mid-20s. I want her to go wherever she wants to go to school, be whoever she wants to be, and say, "You know what? There's a great opportunity for me in Orlando, and I can be here." And if my kids choose to have grandchildren, and I can help raise my grandchildren and stay here, I would be thrilled.
Let's talk a little bit more about housing affordability. I mean, obviously, it's a concern for so many people, especially people with young kids who want to see their kids be able to afford a home here. What do you think needs to be done to bring down the cost of buying a home in Orlando?
So there are several things that can be done here. And part of it is, again, it's the community engagement. It's going to be making sure, not only are we lowering the cost of living, but that we're also raising wages. So we want to have jobs where people can make more. And that's through encouraging more businesses to be here, improving our downtown so that companies want to come here and hire. It's also going to be making sure we have diverse housing options. So not everyone wants a single-family home, and that's not the place that everyone will start. We want to have more townhomes that you can buy, condos that you can buy. And then, of course, the traditional, what we call affordable housing, is absolutely a necessity moving forward.
Governor DeSantis has called on property tax reform, along with other state officials, saying that property taxes should be cut, if not eliminated entirely, certainly for homesteaded properties. Do you agree with that stance? And how, if it is approved, do you think the city of Orlando should respond to that?
So there is, I would agree, some reform would be needed. I don't think it would be helpful to fully eliminate property taxes, because this is one of the number-one ways that we fund our local police and our local file department. And we know that safety is one of the top concerns of residents in Orlando. And after knocking on so many doors, I've heard that over and over again. We love our police, we love our firefighters, we want to continue to support them, and that's a really great source of funding for that. At the same time, our property taxes have gone up quite a bit. And providing relief, providing, I would say, maybe a voucher or a rebate to certain groups, maybe that's more for teachers and firefighters, and some of our public servants that really need a break in that regard. I think there's also, there's an opportunity to also encourage more rehabilitation rather than new construction in some of our single-family developments.
Is there anything that I did not ask you about that you would like to share with us?
Yes.
Okay.
So one, I'd say, big phrase I'm using in my campaign is representing our shared values and collaborating on solutions. And something that's really important to me to convey in this race is that I want to represent everyone. I think a lot of times, especially now we're in social media, we get into silos of, "I'm this party," or "I'm that party," or "I have kids," or "I don't have kids," or whatever, the defining topic could be. And I think we need to break out of that and say, across the board, whatever your party is, whatever your family status is, there are a couple of things that we all really care about. And it's our kids getting to school safely, it's making sure our roads are safe, it's having good infrastructure and affordability and safety. And across the board, we agree on those things. And as a city commissioner, that's what I want to focus on. It's like being a mom. I don't choose, my kids have a fight, I'm not going to choose sides. It's not you're right and you're wrong, it's what happened? How can we figure this out? How can we work together? And really bring people together to solve these really big issues, especially moving forward, and especially for our kids.
So I was born and raised here in Orlando. Actually, I was born in District 3, where I'm running, at the, when it was still called the Florida Hospital. I know before that it was called the Florida Sanitarium. Come from middle-class family of, my mom and dad both worked as, in grocery stores. Went to St. Charles, Edgewater High School, later went on to go to Valencia FSU, where I got a bachelor's and master's in political science. Once I moved back here to Orlando during COVID, I began being very active in the community. I served in a state legislative office as an intern. I engage regularly with different community groups, such as neighborhood associations, whether that's Rosemont, College Park, Lake Formosa, you name it. And also, I ran for the Soil and Water Conservation Board in 2022 and was elected to that position. So now I currently serve as chairman of the board. So that's just a little bit about me.
Why did you decide to run for District 3?
Why I decided to run for District 3 was, I understood that Commissioner Stewart, he had the intent to retire. He said that during his last campaign. And I was kind of looking around to see who I'd want to support for, to fill his position. And being engaged in the community, I frankly didn't see anyone who regularly participated in the community as to the extent that I felt I had. And so that's why I decided to run.
So what do you think is the biggest issue facing District 3 and the city of Orlando?
Well, you go to each neighborhood, and they have various different issues, such as, you go to Rosemont, development's a big issue, protecting green space. You go to College Park, it's about the Edgewater redevelopment plan. Same thing with an Audubon Park with Corinne, making sure neighborhoods are walkable and bikeable. But I think the largest issue we see in Orlando that I hear from voters is affordability. So I think the ways we address affordability is, one, investing in our affordable housing trust fund. According to city code, there is a trust fund, but no amount of money is required to actually go towards it. So I would like to make that a hard, reoccurring amount. I also believe when you do a better job through what's called inclusionary zoning, we have what's called the problem of the missing middle, where seemingly the only housing options are apartments for rent or houses that can go up to $1 million. And there's not really affordable options in the middle. So making sure we properly zone neighborhoods to include things like ADUs, townhomes, quadplexes, things like that.
What's an ADU?
An ADU is, I believe it stands for auxiliary dwelling unit. And so it's like an in-law suite.
What would you work to change on day one?
On day one? Well, the city council, I try to remind people that we have what's called a strong mayor system in Orlando. A strong mayor system is essentially where the mayor is in charge of running the city mostly, and the commissioners, who are on the board, there's six commissioners, help to approve the mayor's agenda. So when it comes to things in my neighborhood that I would be looking to put forth to the city council, would be things like making our neighborhoods walkable and bike by cyclists. I've been hit by a car, living here in District 3, actually twice.
Tell me about that.
So one time was when I was a child, I was actually on the sidewalk in a car, jumped the curb, and hit me while I was riding my bike. The second time, I was going to school at Edgewater High School. I actually remember the day, December 7th, 2016. It was at the intersection of Parr and Formosa. If you go to that intersection, you'll see that there is no bike lane in that area. So I was riding in the road or sidewalk, I don't remember, but I was going straight, another car was turning and turned into me while I was in the intersection.
So what would you do? Because that is a big problem facing, really, a lot of communities across central Florida. Pedestrian safety, cyclist safety, how do you make it safer?
So one stance, as I say about my beliefs, is I believe in protecting green space. So the only concrete I like to see is for sidewalks, bike paths, and protected bike lanes. So when we have a street redevelopment, like what's going on on Corinne Drive or Edgewater Drive, Edgewater specifically, there are bike lanes down Edgewater Drive. Through most of it, it gets, they suddenly disappear between Princeton and Smith. But for the most part, there are bike lanes, but the current plans would remove them. And I've heard significant concerns from the cyclist community about that. So just making sure that we have someone on the city council, that when these plans are going forward, to be an advocate of saying, "No, let's make sure we have a protected bike lane, right? Let's make sure we have a mixed-use path." And when we do have a mixed-use path, right, make sure, you know, there's not utility poles or business signs or chairs in the way, to make sure it's easy for cyclists to go at a decent speed.
What is your vision for the city, say 15 years from now, in the year 2040?
My vision for the city in the year 2040, I would say, making it a green city, making it so that we are, the city has a plan to have zero waste by 2040, also has a goal to be net-zero carbon emission by 2050. So I would like to not only meet those goals, but try to meet them early. I think also, it's important that we address our affordability issue, like I mentioned earlier, because so many people, that's their biggest issue. And we can't have a city with growing, a growing city if people don't feel that they can afford to live here.
Is the concern, going back to the affordability thing, that developers are not required to build kind of more affordable homes, that they're just choosing to build either apartments because they see that's where the money can be made, or million-dollar homes?
I don't think there's incentives, really. There's also, when you look at the zoning, in certain neighborhoods, it says, "No, you can only build a single-family home." And so that, if that's the requirement, then you're only going to see, you know, like million-dollar houses being built, because that's kind of how much a house goes for nowadays in Orlando.
Governor DeSantis has called on property tax reform, as have some other state officials, saying they should either be cut or completely eliminated. Do you agree with that? What's your response and reaction to that idea?
No, I disagree with that sentiment. You know, it sounds great on face value that, "Oh, we're going to cut property taxes, your tax burden to the local government's not going to be as great." Well, let me tell you, most of city revenue, general revenue, comes from property taxes. So if we don't have those property taxes, we can't have things like fire department, a police department, Public Works, things like that. So if it's not coming from property taxes, the revenue has to come from two other places. It can either come from the state, so now the city will be beholden to state politicians, not the local constituents, or it'll have to come from a sales tax, because in Florida, we can't have a personal income tax. That's in the Constitution of Florida. So the significance of having a larger sales tax is, look, working-class families, they live paycheck to paycheck. So their entire paycheck is being applied to that sales tax, because essentially, every dollar they're spending is being taxed, essentially. Whereas wealthier individuals, they don't live paycheck to paycheck. So only a smaller portion of their income is actually being applied to that sales tax. So it's a regressive form of taxation, which will negatively impact working-class communities rather than the wealthier upper classes.
What about this whole argument that we're hearing from a lot of state officials, that, you know, revenues have increased a lot over the past, say, 10 years, but population hasn't gone up as much? So what we're hearing from, like, the state's DOGE audit team, is that they're collecting more money than ever before, yet they don't have as many people to justify all that.
Well, I think the DOGE here in Florida, also what the CFO has called FFO, that's not me saying that, that's what they literally call it. When they're looking to try to say, "Okay, you know, let's rein in, you know, spending," right? They're not looking to, there is little evidence that I've seen of misconduct, waste, fraud, and abuse. What they're looking at is making, taking away money that makes it so your neighborhoods can be walkable and bikeable. They're taking away resources to improve the sustainability of your neighborhood, so like investing in tree scapes, landscapes, stuff like that, investing in renewable energy. They're taking away incentives for women and minority-owned businesses, because apparently that's too woke. I don't see how, being a small business owner, how that plays into, you know, woke identity politics. But that's what they're looking at cutting, not actually looking towards substantive reductions in waste, fraud, and abuse.
Is there anything that you would like to share with us that I did not ask you about?
About me personally?
Sure.
Yeah, so I am a college professor at Valencia. I teach local politics. I also serve as the chairman on the Orange Soil and Water Conservation Board. That's actually an elected board that we all vote for here in Orange County, whether you know it or not. I have also repeatedly spoken at city hall on a number of issues, trying to support smart-growth initiatives, try to limit urban sprawl or annexations, or giving tax deductions to big corporations or developers. So I participate at city hall, I serve as an elected official, I participate in the community in the different neighborhood associations or community groups like Lock Haven, Friends of the Lock Haven Chain of Lakes is another one. And so for all those reasons, I feel like I'm the best choice for District 3.
What do you do on the Soil and Water Conservation Board? What is that?
Yeah, so I get that question a lot. What does the Soil and Water Supervisor do? And the easiest way I can describe it is, it's effectively an elected advisory board. And the easiest way I can describe it is it's effectively an elected advisory board. Now, people also, well, what's an advisory board? It's an unpaid position. So because of that, not many people want to do it. Our job is to advocate for the environment that can't, the environment cannot advocate for itself. So it's our job to advocate for it. And so while I've been on the board, I've proposed and gotten passed a number of resolutions supporting voters to be able to vote on the rural boundary this last election. I, and when the city of Orlando was trying to undermine it by annexing a large piece of land east side of the city, days before that initiative was going to be voted on, I wrote to the city and said, please don't do this. And then, for various reasons, the city eventually decided not to go forward with it. In addition, that I was against the bear hunt that the FWC has approved for this year. That was the first thing I did. Once appointed chairman of the board, was passed a resolution against that. And generally, the job is to, like I said, stand up for the environment and to push back on reckless development. And it's a thankless job that not many people want to do, but like my campaign slogan is, showing up for you. I show up for my community, and I stood up and said, I'll do the job.